Mr. Joyce, do you have any comments, questions, Miss Haley, y'all, or lead on this?
Well, what I like about it is it reflects the thoughts of our community members guided by Al and Gisella and the team. And I think there's a lot of depth to it, the logo itself, and of course, the narrative and the tagline. There's a lot of thought, a lot of depth, a lot of Castle Hills is in it. And thinking back on the comprehensive plan, the folks there who commented on what was most important about our city was the trees, the country feel. And I think that comes out very nicely in that logo. So I'm just delighted with what Al and his team have presented. And our hope was that y'all would consider approving this this evening. So that Al and the team can move on to plan the production and other steps.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
And I'll just add that having a chance to work with Creative Civilization and all the team and their professionalism and experience and the relationships that they have established throughout the communications community and this community, it's made it a easier is not the word I want to say, but it does. Where we have that kind of support and that way of getting things done. And I'm just so glad that we did this. And this has been a long time coming to have this process happen. It's been, we've talked about it for years and I'm very delighted that we're here now.
Mr. Smith?
I don't know if this is more of a question for Mr. Rappley or for Mr. Joyce, but moving forward, what exactly does that entail in this situation? Is this incurring additional cost? Is this, you know, a new contract? Is this extending the current contract? Is this within the current contract?
That's a good question, Councilman. All of the consultant time is, of course, already addressed. But what they're going to do is look at, if you recall some of the slides, which he referred to as touchpoints, whether they be signs or monuments or hats or T-shirts, whatever that might be. They will propose to us a budget for getting that done. And we can talk in more detail, of course, as a community, about where we would like to see monuments located. We know that we have a couple of monuments already in place. How do we handle that? But yes, they will look at the most appropriate places to place these logos and taglines and suggest a cost for what that might be. Thank you.
Ms. Haley?
And I think there's a couple of months left on our initial contract. That this is part, helping getting this started is already part of this. So the rest of it can be discussed as we move forward. I think that's correct, isn't it? Isn't that right, Mr. Rappley?
That is correct on the contract itself with Creative Civilization.
Counsel, any other comments, thoughts, input? Mr. May?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Ms. Daines, I'm sorry, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, with that all said, then, I move that we approve the work of Creative Civilization for their narrative, the tagline and the logo, and turn them loose to move into the next phases of the process.
We have a motion on Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Daines. Comments, questions? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation discussion and possible action on Economic Development Incentive Plan developed by the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, economic development's been hammering away there for probably almost a year now. But you asked us to prioritize the idea of an incentive plan. And so we have done so. And we're going to present, Ms. Amy McLean is going to present a sort of a framework or draft of what that might look like. So if I may, Ms. McLean, please, whenever you're ready.
All right, no PowerPoint this evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Amy McLean. I am the Secretary for our Economic Development Committee. I'm pleased to give you a chance to see what we've been working on related to an incentive policy for our city. We were asked to prioritize this and I assume everyone has given, been given a copy of our latest draft of this policy.
Yes, ma'am, we just received it.
Okay, very good. And I just want to point out some highlights and then invite you all to contact your, either your appointed person on our committee or any one of us. We'd be happy to talk with you about any questions, comments, suggestions that you might have after you've had a chance to take it home and review it further. So the big things that I'd like to point out is that we, we are kind of breaking up our incentives into two different categories. One category would be our tier one and tier two incentives, which are intended to bring in additional sales tax or jobs that would bring in revenue to the city. So these would be a higher value type of incentive, whether it's a tax abatement or full in the blank for something that's a pretty large incentive that would encourage sales tax into the city. And the idea being that the net benefit to the city would be more money than what we're giving up in, you know, either a reduction of something or, you know, that hasn't been fleshed out. But tier one and tier two, which are related to urban renewal or retail and restaurant support, are intended to be pretty major types of incentives. The easier ones, which we probably can address much sooner, would be the tier three and tier four, which would be modest cash incentives that would most likely take the form of a grant, either a matching grant or a small grant. And, you know, we were thinking it could be $500. It could be $1,000, you know, maybe we do five, there's a matching of five with the business. And then some amount of time that the business has to remain in existence and doing business in order to actually be given the money from the city. All those provisions are, you know, remain to be flushed out. But the idea being that these would, would involve more education and job training or beautification. Because it was noted as we went through the comprehensive plan that everyone notices areas of town where we wish people would plant more trees, maybe have some flowers, maybe do some painting, maybe put up better signage. And so the tier four grants would really be a way for the city to invest small amounts strategically with businesses interested in our program to beautify the city in small areas. So it would be a large kind of benefit for a small outlay of cash for the city. Of course, there's whole processes that still have not been fleshed out, but this is our general idea. So we invite you all to contact us with comments, suggestions, ideas as we move forward with a more complete incentive policy for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Counsel? I'll jump in. I can't tell you how excited I am to see the, turns the tax increment reinvestment zone. I think that is a great opportunity that exists in the city of Castle Hills. And I think that once we can designate those areas, we were going to see a huge growth. And the additional restaurant support. I was at a North Chamber breakfast with the mayors and I mentioned that we were exploring it. And I had a reporter reach out to me who wanted to have a conversation because they were excited at the idea of a city leaning in to something we already do well. So I love the track that we're on. Thank you so much for your work.
Very good, all right. Well, again, I encourage you to contact us with comments, suggestions, ideas that maybe we missed. The more brains that work on this, the better it will be in the long run. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to proceed to presentation discussion on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Mr. Rappley? Did I? Oh, you know, you're right, I'm sorry. Updating discussion, I was trying to hurry up. Mr. Rappley told me to make it quick. Updating discussion on the report from the City Council Subcommittee regarding the improvements to City Hall. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. As you may know, counsel is very, very interested in what might we do with City Hall. That's a question that was brought up in the comprehensive plan. And Ryan has had some engineer study what might happen with this thing. And the engineers didn't particularly like the idea of renovating the entire thing. They preferred a new building. So it, you know, that raises a whole bunch of questions. And so Counselwoman Daines and I, and we recruited Mr. Richard Keith, who's going to make a presentation for us today to brainstorm a little bit and see if there were some things that we might knock out, some options that maybe aren't so good. But anyway, Richard is going to update us on our thoughts at this point. Richard, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. City Manager, Council Members, City Manager, thank you very much. My name's Richard Keith. I live on Danube Drive, which is near the southern border of the city. So I guess you could say I'm from the south side of Castle Hills. So as Councilman Joyce mentioned, I've been working with him and Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Daines on a plan to think about the space needs for the city of Castle Hills and the City Hall and the Police Department. So can I, if I can, there we go. Okay, so as you know, Castle Hills inherited the current City Hall, which was originally built as a church facility before it went on to house the current City Hall building and the, and the city government facility. The City Hall building configuration includes several limitations as it is right now, including inadequate restrooms and inadequate police facilities, to name a couple. I think you all recognize this. At the same time, the City Council Chamber, which we're standing in, is a lovely hall, but maybe a little bit larger than what our needs are. And that if we were to think strategically, maybe there are other ways that we could use the space in order to get some of the things in that we want to include in the building. So the City Hall and its residents would benefit, I think, from a facility that might include, number one, adequate ADA compliant restrooms, a smaller, right-sized council chamber, adequate police facilities, a community room with a kitchen as a resource for our residents and community, and maybe some possible outdoor amenities for the community such as tennis court or pickleball court or basketball courts for the use by our community members. I think he took the remote with him.
I'm your human remote over here, Mr. Keith.
Okay, great.
Other duties as assigned.
Appreciate that. Okay, no, I think we're good now. Okay, so, so in terms of options, the way that we have been thinking about it in the course of our discussions is that there may be three basic kinds of directions that we could go here. Number one, acquire new property for Castle Hills City Hall and Police Complex. Number two, renovate the existing building, which would presumably cost less money than the first option would. And number three, to do only minimal cosmetic improvements. So here are a couple of factors or criteria to consider. One, the overall cost of the project to the city. So a fully functional City Hall and Police Station might be ideal, but it will be expensive. Number, the second note on this, a building renovation alone might not fully address the needs that we have, especially as it relates to the Police Department. We might be able to do a little bit better job for the Police Department, not meet all of their needs. Also, doing only cosmetic improvements, which was that third option, really doesn't address the needs of the City Hall or the Police comprehensively. Therefore, a hybrid approach may be the most cost effective. And we also, I think, want to consider here the cost to taxpayers and to try to avoid impact on resident taxes if we, if we can at all do so. That would be a goal. And, and also to consider the timeline for project implementation and completion. So our recommendation is to use a hybrid approach, as I mentioned, with two parts. Part one, to renovate the current City Hall, to include a new community room for community use, a smaller City Council Chamber, new administrative offices and larger ADA compliant restrooms. And part two, to construct a new police facility, a new operations facility on either existing property owned by the city or on new land acquisition. And that, I think, we have not yet determined. We haven't looked at real estate, for example. There are a lot of details still to work on. But in terms of the next steps, here's what next steps might look like. In 2024 and 2025, we would propose to have the City Council consider engaging an architect to construct a formal analysis and an initial plan. And then to follow that in 2025 with gathering community input on a proposed plan, followed further by identifying project funding. And then in 2026 and 2027, designing and implementing the building renovation. And in looking out even further, 2027, 2028 kind of timeframe, looking at the design and implementation of a new police building. So that is the presentation. Again, I worked on this with Councilmember Joyce, Councilmember Daines. And we can address any questions that you might have and also are eager to get any input discussion that you all may have on the topic. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keith, for your work on this committee and the other committees as well. Mr. Joyce, comments, questions, or you want to sit back and let everything unroll?
I'm ready to listen.
Okay, Ms. Haley?
I have one question. If you're here on Thursdays when it's court day, this room is very fully used. So I don't know, there's, needs to be some kind of a plan for what are you going to do then? I mean, now it looks like this. You know, there are times when you need every one of those chairs, I think, but by the time we're done. So, I mean, I'm all for doing this. And, and I'm thinking about how I might be on a walker by the time we get this finished. And I, I hope we can, we can move it along as expedite wherever possible to make this happen. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. I think y'all are on a great path. I, I would love a new City Hall, but I also realize financially, it's a big pill to swallow, especially when we have so much already on our plate for streets and drainage. I, I see a possibility with us utilizing a fraction of this for our chambers and being able to put a community room over here that has access to the common a little bit closer and utilize that half for all things police. And so I can see where that iteration may be the least obtrusive to daily operations. And I did think about court. And so in my mind, you could have an auxiliary overflow in the community room with people just coming in as necessary. So a consideration that would definitely have to be part of it. But I think we're on to something good and I'm glad that somebody smarter than me can actually put some reasoning to just my gut feeling of what was a good idea. So thank you and thank you, Mr. Joyce.
One more thing. It's not going to get any cheaper to do this. So the more we can get it laid on and make it happen, and I don't know if there's any money in the seizure fund, if there's any money, if it's for police action.
Not that we can dictate how that money.
Gotcha, but, but I think if they said, we propose this, I think the shoe's on the other foot. And I'm, as we explore things and if, and I also, I think people might be more than happy to make an investment in this city. Why couldn't we offer bonds, our own bonds, for people to invest in this project? I mean, we haven't, we've never asked that of the community. And if we're exploring ways to fund, we may find there, there's some money there that we didn't know we had, rather than it all having to be driven by the budget. And I hope we'll look into that.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess what we were really hoping for, thank you for the wonderful comments, by the way. We appreciate it very much. But what we really hope will happen is that y'all will be comfortable with our recommendation that we engage an architect to take it to the next step. Because I think we've gotten as much out of a citizen committee as we can. And, you know, it's, it's not, we're going to have to spend real money. This will be tens of thousands to hire an architect and look at this whole thing and talk to all of the different departments and gather the space needs and figure out what the right floor plan should be and whether or not new land makes any sense. So that, that would be my wish is that, and well, what the hell, just make a motion. I move that we approve, well, we don't have an amount yet. We approve that the city manager be given the opportunity, permission to engage an architect to conduct a formal analysis and initial plan pending cost, pending the real cost.
So we have a motion on Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Daines. We're going to discuss.
Do you want to discuss?
You can discuss first.
And I, I don't know what we're talking about as far as money, but this sounds like this would be something we'd want to put out for bid and get a lot, get proposals from architecture firms on their ideas and all that. Maybe that's a goes without saying thing, but, you know, I'm.
We will strive to remain in compliance legally. Mr. Schnell?
Yes, we'll definitely stay in compliance with state law, which does require a process, just like Ms. Daines suggested, for the engagement of an architect. So we probably need to put out a request for proposals, a request for qualifications, really, for architectural firms. And we'll need to frame that up. I think Mr. Keith may be instrumental with Mr. Joyce and Ms. Daines in preparing something like that. But it, it's not something where we can just hire someone because we know that person has experience. We need to go through a process under the government code.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, that I'm all for this approach because I think it can be phased out, especially depending on how we have funds available. And we'll actually have a plan, a master plan for this building, so to speak. My only ask is that we make sure that we're not putting the car before the horse and we're ensuring that this building is capable of a little bit more longevity, which I personally think it is. You look around, you don't see a lot of cracks. It's, it's not in the best condition, but structurally it looks sound. So and there's people smarter that are qualified. And I think they've done some of that work already. So I'd just like to make sure that we double check that before we proceed with additional investment. But we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. May?
I just had a couple of comments because I saw in the timeline that part of it involves the end of 2024. If there is a possibility of committing ARPA funds, so that it doesn't come out of other committed funds, I just wanted to put that idea out there. The second idea is that in keeping with our branding and keeping with the front-facing image of this city, I would ask that the architect that's employed, consider mid-century modern period in the transformation. Because to me, that is a very important thing. It's our statement. It's our statement to the public in general, whether it's here in Castle Hills or elsewhere. I just wanted to throw that out while we're here.
Thank you, Mr. May. I think those are all duly noted. The other thing that I would add, just as a cherry on top, is I think we see what we see here. But if you have not been to the police side, you know, there's several officers' office upstairs and don't have windows. So from a safety perspective, having an emergency exit and just quality of life, having a window somewhere in the vicinity, I think it's long overdue. And our city secretary shaking her head because she does not have a window either. So we'll make sure that's a consideration. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Keith. Okay, next up, we have a presentation discussion for the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Mr. Rappley?
At least I can say one thing is, look at the lights in this room now. So, you know. I think Mr. Harada on that one, who has left, but he doesn't, he gets the acknowledgement on that one. So what I wanted to do, Counsel, real quick, as far as the FY '25, with the recommendation of the tax rate tonight, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, this will bring an additional $109,000 in revenue to the general fund, you know, based on what we first projected in the ad valorem collection for the proposed budget. As you recall, we currently sit with a balanced budget with an additional $40,000 in revenue from that standpoint. We still need to finalize the health insurance rate. We currently had plugged in a 10% increase to the budget and we have no COLA program into the budget or any other department requests. So in this case, as far as tonight, I'm recommending we utilize the special meeting scheduled for August 20th to review the proposed budget again. I have more information related to the potential COLA and what that looks like. We'll probably have a firm understanding of the health insurance rate at that time. And then I will also be looking at sharpening the pencil on the budgets of the departments as well. So the August 20th meeting will allow us also to define special projects, you know, as we've talked about for consideration, ARPA seed, especially as a rate of determining dollars that I know Councilman Joyce wants to talk about for potential studies in the comprehensive plan. So I think we can get down into the numbers of what we want to define as far as projects or related costs to things on the August 20th meeting, because we'll come back on September 4th, have any discussion that you all need to have on the proposed budget as we're doing the proposed, I mean, we're doing the public hearing on the tax rate and the proposed budget itself that night. But I'm hoping everyone is available for the August 20th meeting. I know we had it in there as a, if needed. And so I think it's at this time, if needed, to define some things now that we know what tax rate we're moving forward with. So there's no action tonight. I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of the August 20th meeting and everyone can attend. Like Mr. Schnell will say, it's a special meeting and so we need four.
A super majority.
You can stay seated, Mr. Schnell. With that, from, from that standpoint, that's kind of the goal of moving forward with, with, with that next step. So any questions right now that you might have on the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Ms. Davis will be working with our health insurance folks to try to figure out a number that we can plug in and hopefully it's below the 10% that we plugged in that will save some dollars from that standpoint.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Schnell? You didn't, you missed something, Mr. Rappley?
I was, I was about to say that.
Counsel, I would like to move item 6.13 at the recommendation of the city attorney up to next, and consider and act upon scheduling a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Rappley?
Should have been the recommendation of the city manager, but we'll move on. Yes, so I need, I need counsel to call for the budget hearing on September 4th, 6:30 PM. September 4th, 2024.
Do we have any takers, Ms. Haley?
I call for that meeting on September 4th to have our public hearing. Can I call for it? Okay. I move that we hold. I move that we hold a public hearing on the budget on September 4th at 6:30 PM.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Daines, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel.
I knew I wasn't really going to call for it. He just said, call for it. So that's how that happened.
Okay, next up, we have 6.9, discussion and possible action on appointment to the Economic Development Committee. Counsel, do we have a recommendation? Mr. Joyce?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Actually, at this time, Ms. Yes, Mayor, we do. Actually, at this time, Mr. Mike Poole is the alternate member appointed by council. He has served for one year very, very well. And I would like to recommend that we appoint him for a full two-year term.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. I think we need a second. Yes, you read my mind, Ms. Danes. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you to Mr. Poole. Okay. Next, we had discussion of possible action and appointment to the Architectural Review Committee. That is my appointment and I will be appointing again Mr. Barry Middleman to continue serving. And next, we have a discussion of possible action on the city council appointment to the Architectural Review Committee. And I believe we have Ms. Leslie Weber as an alternate. Mr. Joyce?
Oh, yes, Mayor. That was, that was my recommendation or point. I thought it was an appointment, but we all have to approve it. So I would like to move that Ms. Leslie Weber, who has served very well for the last year, be appointed to the Architecture Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
As an alternate. Sorry.
Got it. We have a second. Mr. Smith? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. And next up, we have discussion of possible action appointments to the Crime Control Prevention District for our CCPD. Mr. Smith?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Joyce?
I would just like to, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know which appointment goes with which place. But it sounds like the CCDD, and we certainly welcome the chief's comments, but it sounds like they're functioning pretty well. I don't know that now is the time for a change.
I think it's a result of the terms that are up. Go ahead, chief.
I, yes, Ms. Danes.
Do we have to approve them individually or can we make a motion to approve them?
I would say probably individually is best.
The council vote, someone can make a motion to appoint one, two, or three if there's a second.
Anyone they would like as well, outside of that.
Do you have somebody, Ms. Danes? Does anybody have anybody right now? Okay. And those are tied to place four, one, four, and five? I mean, but, but are, are those people up right now? I'm trying to figure out if they, those are the ones? Okay.
Their terms have expired.
Okay. So if we have Ms. Freas and Mr. Witty, does anybody would like to make a motion to reappoint them? Ms. Danes?
I move that we reappoint Scott Witty and Anna Freas to the Crime Control Prevention District for another two years.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. And then we'll have potentially one more for our next council meeting. Thank you, chief. Okay. I think everybody got a little fuzzy. People aren't used to going this late for our council meetings anymore. Uh, we have announcements on mayor and city council members and items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank city manager Rappley and Ms. Davis and the rest of the team in our city staff for putting together the budget and the proposed tax rate. And we've come in at a good tax rate. I might feel confident about this one. And to, Wayne.
Carter?
What Mr. Carter's discussion about the accident, my wife and I happened to drive upon that not long after it happened. And my wife noted how quickly and how orderly the response from our first responders was. So I thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
Which is just one reason why we love it here. And I will say, and I'll, I'll add to make your plans now for October 1st for National Night Out. And I don't want to steal chief's thunder, but next he'll be talking about it. The police will have their own event on a different day. So the neighborhoods will be wide open for get togethers. And it's Tuesday night, October 1st for National Night Out. And it's not too early to start planning.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Uh, yes. The next Castle Hills Historical Society meeting will be the 24th of August, a week from Saturday in the city hall at 10 AM.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce? Ms. Danes? I want to thank the city staff, police, fire, admin, public works, court. We're in a great place right now as a city where we're struggling and trying to find our next projects to make Castle Hills better. You know, I think for the longest time, we were struggling because we couldn't do anything without doing streets and drainage. And we couldn't get streets and drainage done because we didn't have the money. And so that was really a stopgap. And so we're in a beautiful place where streets and drainage are getting done. And so we're exploring ways to make our police safer, to do more for the fire department now that we've increased our score and offer more services across the board and ultimately remodeling city hall, which I think is all loosely associated on how we feel about coming to work. And so the plan is if we can make that better, everybody's a little bit happier and walk a little bit more pep in our step. So thank you all so much for making it possible. That being said, I will entertain, chief? So if they're not on the list, they don't exist and they might be missed. Okay, chief. Thank you. Hey, I, I was doing the marathon meetings back in the day.
And since we're going to be all writing our Castle Hills reporter articles that are due next Friday, we'll be sure and put the contact person to work with. You'll have it in there. Somebody else will probably have it in there as well. So people can register and make it all happen smoothly for you.
Perfect. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May, eager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a second? All in favor?
Right now.
It is 8:46 and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for being with us. Safe travels, Mr. May.
Thank you.